Roll call.
Teresa Golden.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
John Aitman.
And if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on the ground indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, September 20th and October 4th, and I believe we are caught up on minutes Pam, so no minutes for this evening. I did want to just take a quick minute to thank Joe Dennis for his service with the board. He is leaving us for greener opportunities, but thank you Joe for everything you've done. We've really appreciated working with you and enjoyed it.
You're very welcome. Thank you all.
We wish you all the best. And the first item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Fakori, two lots on Kensington Drive and Dale Road. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Hi.
Had really nothing new to report. As you're well aware, at the last meeting, there was some information raised that we're looking into. I just don't have any answers for you at this time.
Okay.
So we just ask that it be extended to the next meeting.
We'll open for public comment before the board takes any action, but we've adjourned this a couple of times now awaiting. We don't have a plan in front of us or anything yet.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you intending to submit a plan for it?
Well, we're just looking at, we're just looking at some other options. Obviously, the issue with the wetland, the wetland, excuse me, not the wetland, well, it involves the wetland, but the lot count and all that, because of the additional wetland that was flagged, is going to make, probably make this project somewhat difficult, so we're looking at other options. That's all I can say at this time.
Okay. Okay. Let's, do we have any questions or comments from board members before we have public comment?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Anything from our professionals? All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for against Fakori, knowing we don't have new information in front of us? Okay. Come on back up. There's, it doesn't look like we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak. Last call? We've adjourned this a couple of times and we haven't had information from you, and I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but I'm inclined to adjourn this to a date uncertain, so that at the point where you're ready and you have a plan, you would need to re-advertise and repost signs and things like that. Because at this point, I feel like we've adjourned this three or four times and we're still not to the point where we have a plan. I think we completed in-
That's not really true, because we had a meeting, we had a plan at the last meeting and there was some, there was an issue raised. I just don't have an answer for it this time.
I'm not aware that there's a revised plan with a house shown on it and the new wetland delineation. I'm looking at Joe and Michelle.
I think they were on the July 21st meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. It's, I think it's since that meeting we haven't seen any new information, and we were wanting to get some explanation or clarification on the lot count formula and the billable area calculation in time for the next time. It was before the board.
Okay.
And that's what we're missing currently.
We just asked-
But do we have a, I'm sorry, do we have a plan that appropriately shows the wetland boundary? Because I didn't think we did.
That part I think has been resolved, yes.
And it doesn't show the spike anymore? It shows?
No, I think it still has the spike to it.
The buffer, the buffer does, or the, I know the wetland boundary has a spike in it, but the buffer should not.
Can someone describe the fence?
I think the buffer still does.
Like, is last time, the fact that the fence sat in the buffer, you know, what does the fence look like? Does it bow out and bow back in where the spike is?
You have to look at your plan to see that. It's very clear on the plan.
Well, this is an adjourned public hearing. Have you brought the plan with you?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and put it up.
The fence is in the buffer is the problem.
The last one, yeah. And I thought that was the one we said, we really would like to see one, the fence out of the buffer. Yeah, and again, I just want to be clear, you know, that we're not wading past each other here. That, I thought last time we saw the fence and the comment was, can we see a more smooth fence that doesn't sit-
In the buffer.
-in the buffer? That it was entirely outside the buffer and, you know, how that was going to be accommodated in light of the new spike was kind of the big question.
That, the location of the fence was worked out with DEC, because that area right now is a mode area. So, it's within the buffer. The DEC is okay with that, and we have shown it in that location.
Okay, so there is no change to the fence from the last time-
Pam, do we have a copy of the plan that I could have up here?
There will not be a change to the fence. That's where, that's where we're kind of talking past each other.
Just a moment. Just a moment. I didn't see one where the buffer was drawn appropriately, so let me just, I could, yeah, it's still not, this plan does not show the buffer drawn appropriately. Here's the point.
Right.
So this is 100 feet from that, but if I'm standing right here, am I 100 feet from that point? No.
Right.
So this needs to be rounded out.
That's what, right.
The buffer is not correctly drawn on this plan, which is what we've-
So, I thought last time-
That aside the fence issue, I'm talking about the buffer itself is not correctly drawn on the plan.
Okay. Either way, that smoothing, if you will, I thought was the main point of the last discussion. And could we see something that dealt with that? That's all.
So, I would say again, we don't have a plan that actually shows the buffer appropriately drawn to be 100 feet from every wetland point.
Well, I would submit to you that I have a wetland plan that's been signed off by DEC.
I'm not questioning the wetland buffer. I would agree with the wetland as you've drawn it.
Right.
The 100-foot buffer, if you want to bring your plan up here, I'll draw what I'm talking about.
But the, when the-
If you want to bring your plan up, I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Lori, listen to me. When the, when the DEC signs it off, they're attesting to both the wetland and the wetland buffer.
Well, Michelle, then we need to have a discussion with the DEC, because obviously that's not the wetland buffer. Because I could stand one foot away from that point and I'm closer than 100 feet to the wetland. Do we need to have a discussion with the DEC again?
Call them and find out if, how they want to handle it.
All right. If I'm missing something or I'm incorrect, please let me know, but we had this conversation the last time we saw this, and that was the, that was the discussion. Okay. All right.
Okay. So this will be on at the next meeting?
No. The board hasn't made that determination.
All right, so if we put it on for future meetings, what we have to do is we have to ask the board and they would set it, and then we have to re-advertise. Is that correct?
What will happen is you'll make a submission to the planning board. We'll make sure it contains the information it needs to contain, and then we will schedule it for a date certain.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Fakori public hearing to a date uncertain?
Lori, do we want to get any comments?
I asked for, I asked one last time. Was there any additional comments? I did ask for public comment, I think I'm in a, okay. All right, do I have a motion to, or I'm sorry, and any further comment or discussion by board members, professionals?
No, I think you even used the term "last call," which I thought was great.
Sorry about that, all right. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Fakori public hearing to a date uncertain?
So moved.
With the understanding, thank you, with the understanding that the applicant will re-advertise at the point where we have a submission that is ready for public viewing. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. When you're ready and you submit something back to the board, we'll schedule it on for discussion at the next meeting, and then at that point, we would schedule it for another adjourned public hearing date at that point. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Stuart Scott, six lots on Warren Farm Road, adjourned public Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, can I trouble you, do we have the map for this also to put up since it's a public hearing?
Yes.
So I think the last time we saw this, there was a new map presented at the meeting that night, or the day of, the day over, day before the meeting, is that correct? Has there been any additional information submitted since the last time we saw this in the public?
No.
All right. So at that time, we hadn't had our professionals have a chance to review the information that was there. Joe, I know you were taking a look at the disturbance on the site. Do you want to just give us a quick summary of what you found when you reviewed the CAD file for that?
Yes. Ernie's office did provide us with the CAD file and the one sheet on the plan, sheet three of seven, that breaks down the different areas of disturbance by each lot and each different area that they are showing. There's nine different areas that have some form of disturbance, and we checked those areas the way they're drawn, and the calculations that they provided, the areas do match, so we're good. With that respect, we come up with the same amount of area for each one. We also looked at the areas where they intend to rely on the mats as a temporary means to bridge over the ground for equipment, and once we add those areas into the total disturbance area, it does come up just a little higher than the five acres of overall disturbance. The use of the mats, although it might be something that the Corps or the DEC may allow for this kind of situation, it's not really a measure the town's comfortable with, and just mainly from a, trying to police and watch what's going on the whole time. So, if we took a conservative look at this and said, you know, if we factor in the use or not, whether they use the mats or not, they're getting over the five acres, that would then mean they would need to go with a higher level of a SWIP, one that involves erosion, or I'm sorry, stormwater quality and quantity measures in addition to what they have currently shown. I guess another aspect is how tightly they've drawn some of their limits around the fail areas. We kind of know just from construction, they don't always fit within the neat lines that are shown on the map. People may have a tendency to stray outside those lines. For that, he's said they're going to stake the limits and kind of keep control of that, but again, the town wouldn't want to be there to police that full-time, so it's kind of up to the board to decide how comfortable they would be in, you know, saying that what's shown on the map is really what's going to take place out in the field.
I'd like to just add, kind of on the same note, that, Ernie, you mentioned you had spoke to Walter Artis about either a waiver or permission to exceed. So I spoke to Walter, and he was very clear about the conversation that you had. That waiver that you guys discussed really pertains to, in a larger subdivision, or it could have been this subdivision, you have a five-acre limit of disturbance while you're doing your construction. If you have a large Walmart site or a large subdivision that you need to disturb 10 acres at a time or 15 acres at a time, the town can evaluate that and grant a waiver and give permission to exceed that five acres. But under no circumstance, if your disturbance goes over five acres, can you waive the requirement for stormwater, post-stormwater treatment? Okay? So, if you go over five acres, it's the full SWIP. There's no waiver for that.
And just to go further with Scott had mentioned, and that's correct. When I, basically, at the last meeting, I misspoke. I evidently, I misunderstood Walter.
Okay.
And he said, oh, he says you can go for the, well, you can go for the, you can go for the waiver, but in fact, as Scott had described it, is correct, knows if you've got multiple acres where you're describing, let's say you're disturbing 20 acres, you can do it in five-foot increments, and you have to restore that and then move to the next one. And there was just some miscommunication there. So I misspoke on that, was not correct. So, I take back what I said a month ago.
Okay.
And that's a process we've used at Hopewell Glen. They're allowed to disturb an area greater than five acres, but their stormwater facilities still have to be built and constructed.
Okay.
And we implement whatever measures we think necessary if they go above the five acres, so.
So, Scott, you would probably know this better than the board. Have we seen these mats used on any other-
Well, I think a good example, and I know where Ernie's coming from, I think a good example is Central Hudson, I believe it was, just did a major, like retrofit of some infrastructure. And you can see mats stacked along 376 on the border with Wapengers. But it's one contractor, they're mobilized, they're doing one project, they have a truckload of mats, and they're using those mats. I mean, I don't think anyone's questioning that. But in the case here, we have multiple contractors, small contractors, well-drillers, excavators, small guys. Every contractor that shows up is not going to go order himself a stack of pallets to do it. So I think we've got apples and oranges here, and we're not comfortable, I'm not comfortable agreeing to mats in this particular project. If it was a large-scale linear project by one contractor, that we could police, that's another story, but that's not the case here.
So, as far as the requirement, Scott or Joe, for the enhanced stormwater review, the SWIP?
Mm-hmm.
If the, if the town isn't comfortable with allowing the use of the mats, you're saying the limits of disturbance are going to be over five acres?
Right, just, just over 5.013, the way it's drawn, but again, the way it's drawn is probably fairly tight, and there's, so that 5.013 might become 5.1 or-
Okay. So what would that mean to the plan itself? Would you expect there to be a different amount of disturbance if we had to account for stormwater mitigation?
Yeah, there would be, yeah, that area itself would result in more disturbance, but to create an area for a pond or some other kind of practice for stormwater, you'd have to, you'd have to grade and open up another area for that. But at that point, you're already over the five acres, so it doesn't matter as much.
Have you looked at the stormwater standards for over five acres of disturbance to see what would be required? Do you have an idea of how you would do it or what you would do?
Well, you know, usually the most, the most cost-effective way usually is some sort of a water quality pond.
Okay.
Not that there's other ways of doing it, but, you know, I still, and I heard what Scott and Joe said, but I still think, I still think that it can be done. You know, as far as policing it, you know, after the fence is set up, you could do an as-built, you could monitor it. I mean, there's a lot of ways of doing it. I mean, you know, we stake out buildings to 100th of a foot. I like to think that we could get, we could get stormwater, silt fences et cetera, that we could get that within a few inches. I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm repeating myself what I said before, but obviously, we have a difference of opinion, so.
Well, I guess I'm specifically looking, not, not so much at where you might go over, but if the town isn't comfortable using the mats as, I'm not sure what the right phrase would be, as not counting as disturbed area. I think you would still have to go in and cut the brush down, right, to put mats down? They don't, they don't go over brush, right? So you would brush-cut it and then put mats down? Or how does that work exactly?
You could, you could, you could do that, or in a case like this, it's so small, you could just lay it over the brush. And then just trench, do, take your trench, do what you got to do, and you pull the mats up. You know, the, it's true, it's not a linear project like Scott was mentioning out on Central, for Central Hudson on 376, but I mean, in fact, it could be done. I mean, this is, it's a relatively small site. It's not impossible. It can be done, but obviously-
Well, just for the record, I mean, you're seeking six lots. If the lots were reduced, wouldn't that eliminate this issue as well as probably the wetlands mitigation issue? And would that be a more environmentally sound fix for the issues here, to allow development to a lesser degree, not as impactful with the environment? And that might give the board some latitude in considering the negative declaration, which you need. But at this point, it seems to me everything is being pushed to the maximum.
Well, you got-
Not only, even if you disregard the administering of it or the supervision of it, but just all the impacts. I mean, you've got to mitigate a wetlands, there's a five-year follow-up with the Army Corps, then you're pushing the, as the town engineers indicated, the well-driller contractor, all these lots could be sold to six different people. That compounds the whole situation. So have you and your client evaluated the elimination of one or two lots to modify the impacts to the environment?
Well, I think we represented to the board that, the board was very concerned about keeping all the wetlands just as they are, so you'd be to three lots.
Three lots.
And we have two now. We're proposing, we're proposing six lots on 12 acres, which is an average of two acres per lot.
Up to this point, while the board did briefly look at alternative layouts, you expressed the intent to either do the six lots or to keep your current layout. Is that still the case, or are you willing to consider lesser lots at this point?
Well, I can go back and talk to the client.
Okay.
I mean, that, the last directive I had, he wanted to hold his ground.
Okay.
But, if we, at five lots, we still have wetland disturbance. At four lots, we still have wetlands disturbance. Now we're down to three. I mean, if there can be no disturbance, then I think it's got to be three lots.
Yep. Okay. Is there a way to avoid the wetland mitigation with the five-year plan with four lots?
No, because any time you, if you have to modify any kind of wetlands, you still have the, you still have the monitoring.
So to get four lots, you would still have to modify the federal-
And do the full mitigation plan? The reclamation and all of that? Other questions or comments from board members, or anything else that we would want to see?
No further updates on the example of a private ownership of a wetland mitigation, and are we just going to go into this assuming the town will ultimately, what is, I guess it's a question for the professionals as well as the applicant.
I'm not understanding your question.
Last time, you submitted the, was it four corners was the example, and we said, is there one that was a private, that was not capped as a corporation and the builder, that was passed on to a-
I don't have any new information on that.
No new information, okay.
So, but what is the latest plan for the reporting and monitoring of that? That the private owner will do it? With no bonds, no, no nothing? I just want to understand where we are.
All right. The plan was that the mitigation would be implemented. It would have to be done by one person. It's not going to be done by six.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it was all contained within the one lot.
But the work is all within one lot, that's correct.
Right.
And the owner, as of right now, I can only go by the current owner and developer, he would have to be responsible. Now, maybe what he does, he holds that lot till the end, maybe he does all the work, and if he transfers that to, let's say he transfers it to one builder that's going to build all six lots, then that person's responsible.
Well, we're dealing with an Army Corps permit on a project to come before the board, has been away from the board for many years. And in that case, the Army Corps is seeking the developer to obtain a private conservation group to monitor the easement, and that the developer would agree with that group to pre-fund to that group the cost and expense of the monitoring and the guarantee of the changes to the wetlands. And that's how they're going to address it, and that's, the Army Corps, I believe, has a list of several different agencies across the country that, you know, you can approach to consider it. Now, it would take the town out of it, it would also ensure the people that it's getting done, and that's something that, you know, I know is available. Now, that's a larger subdivision, but it's, you know, on a larger scale, there's more that needs to be monitored.
Well, it could still, I mean, whether it's an agency from across the country or it's a local consultant, either way, it can still be monitored.
Well, whatever, but I'm just saying that that's a conservation group, and the concept is, is they're a perpetual agency, because they're a corporation. It gets pre-funded, they work out what their estimate and value is, they monitor it, they put the reports in, and they have the authority to enforce the restrictions if a homeowner exceeds whatever limits there are on the property. So, you might want to explore something like that.
Thank you, Tom. I mean, that was the kind of, Ernie, that's the kind of description, I think, that the board has been looking for, that says, how would this thing really work? How do we conceptualize this and who's responsible for what?
And how do we mitigate the impact on a future homeowner and the town with regard to that plan?
So you're saying that that area, which we've put into a conservation easement to start with, you're saying that that would, during the duration of this work, would be put to an independent group, an agency?
Well, it's always going to be subject to the conservation easement, because even if this new planting is successful, it still can't be built in.
Right.
But what these agencies do is, as you know, with a conservation easement, you have to have a statutorily approved person, agency to hold the easement. The town happens to be one, but then there are these not-for-profits that are authorized under the environmental conservation law to hold these easements. They do that, and then they'll do active enforcement of it forever, but they'll also have you contribute X dollars to cover the cost of any active monitoring that has to be done for a reasonable period of time, so.
Would that include execution of an additional plan if there's reclamation?
It could be. I mean, that's between the property owner and the agency, but they won't agree to, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't know of any, any agency at this point in time. I have to check that out.
Okay.
I mean, we were always in the impression we would be a private consultant, but maybe this is, sounds like this would be something more of an independent, which sounds like would be more favorable to the town. Is that correct, huh?
What we're looking to do is mitigate the burden on a future homeowner and the burden on the town in the event that that plan has to have something more than just someone take a look at it once or twice a year.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ernie, going in on your scenario with the private consultant, I never understood how it would work. There would be a bond posted by the builder that then would somehow be transferred to the homeowner?
Well, the whole issue of the bond came up, that was strictly, that was just a suggestion to the board. This is a way that, because I think your concern was, once this is stamped and approved, how do we know this is even going to be done? So I think, I think the board wanted some sort of assurance.
Right.
That's how the whole bond came in. And that was just a suggestion.
Okay.
You know, obvi, it's kind of morphed into a lot of other different conversations on that.
But I think we need a plan.
Right.
We need to know what the plan will be, so that, you know, we know what we're voting on.
Well, the plan that we submit and that we've talked about, is that acceptable or not? It sounds like it's not, or you're not comfortable with it?
I think, I think Ms. Golden's referring, correct me if I'm wrong, the process of administering the wetlands restoration, that plan as opposed to the map showing the lots.
But-
So, so we've identified-
Along with our permit, but our permit, I mean, we're subject to a permit.
We've identified-
But the permit's going to say-
Tom, we've identified as a board that we have a concern that that mitigation plan, if assigned to a private residential homeowner, would be difficult to maintain at best, and likely would fail, and either cause the town or someone else to have to step in and provide the continuation of the mitigation and any rehabilitation of that wetland if certain plannings failed or whatever. So what we're asking you is, do you have a way to mitigate that concern that the board has identified as part of its seeker review? And so what Tom is suggesting is that there may be an avenue you could research through the Army Corps where there could be-
So instead of only having three lots, he may have three plus something with the other reduction to bring it under the other permit, and then you may have a-
Well, I think one mitigation would be to stay out of the wetlands. Another mitigation might be to offer to the town or the board a solution that would say there would be someone that could manage this, and it wouldn't become the burden on a single-family homeowner, or the town ultimately, to make sure that that Army Corps plan was carried out.
Those are your two issues, which I perceive the board is struggling with.
Right.
I'm sorry, Ernie, you didn't understand that before.
And, and you're not-
That it was how this was going to play out in terms of who was responsible for what, at what points in the transfer of property.
And just so we can be clear, the fact that the Army Corps gives you a permit to do something is not necessarily binding on this board as part of the overall consideration of the realistic impacts that are perceived and realistic ways to mitigate it. So the Army Corps' plan, while they approve it, may be a little too complex to administer for this size development with the town.
Okay. I'll have to check it out.
Okay. Were there, were there any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Scott and Joe, I guess I want to see if we can come to a conclusion with regard to the limits of disturbance and either use or not use of the mats, and then the requirement to do the additional stormwater. Can we, can we definitively say if the plan moved forward as currently presented, that we would want the additional stormwater study? Or are we going to accept the mats? It doesn't sound like we're comfortable accepting the mats from the-
My position is we don't want to accept the mats. So beyond that, I don't know what the numbers are, but if we can make another alteration to the disturbance limits in some fashion to get underneath that threshold number of five acres, that's fine. But mats isn't going to be an option.
But short of that, if the limits of disturbance as currently presented on the plan are over five acres, and then would require the additional stormwater study and/or permitting?
So are you, are you saying then, using the mats puts it over five acres?
Yes.
We're saying that the town, I'm sorry, not the town, that the recommendation of the professionals is that the town, with a small project like this, and the number of people that would be at the site, different contractors, that the management of appropriate use of those mats to control the disturbance is very small, that we wouldn't be able to do that one. So what we're suggesting is if we count the area that would be used with the mats as disturbance, you're right now just a little 5.0 something acres over, just slightly over the five acres. If you were able to find a way to, again, reduce your limits of disturbance so that you didn't need the mats, and not do the additional stormwater, or if you need the limits as they're currently presented, we're asking you to do the additional stormwater study. And if, and which would lead to likely some type of pond, which would lead to additional disturbance and put you over five acres. I think Scott's suggestion is maybe there, I don't, I haven't-
Maybe you can move the house closer to the road, shorten up the driveway into disturbance. Maybe that's one way to gain back your area, I don't know.
All right. Well, we'll look at it.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're definitive in what we're looking for. So you, so it's a mitigation plan, sorry, I don't want to use the phrase mitigation plan. It's, it's your proposal for how the town can rely on the mitigation plan being presented for the wetlands would be carried out without putting burden on a future homeowner or on the town? And also resolving, knowing that you need to count the area with the mats as part of the disturbance, trying to either bring your limits of disturbance under the five acres, and it seems like you're very, very close right now based on what Joe's seeing, or doing the additional stormwater mitigation that would be required on site, which would be both, I think, a permit and the plan, the Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan. Is there anything else, before we open for public comment, is there anything else from our professionals that is still missing or that we're waiting on? Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to offer comment for, against the Stuart Scott subdivision, six lots on Warren Farm Road? Okay, come on back up, Ernie. The other thing that you can certainly do if you, if you want, is if you, if you reduce the number of lots you're requesting, then, you know, some of these other things go away. But again, that's reliant on you to come back to the board and make that suggestion.
Okay.
Is there anything else that board members want to request at this point, or need at this point?
Can we recap the list of what we're expecting? I mean, just get deja vu all over.
Okay. I have two things. One is, one is sufficient mitigation of the concern raised for the wetland mitigation plan, so that there isn't a burden on a future homeowner or the town, and that the plan can be assured of being carried out appropriately. And that's up to the applicant to say, here's what I propose, to make sure that this won't become a burden to the town or a burden to a future homeowner. And the, the other is the, either revision of the limits of disturbance for the six-lot layout, so that it is under five acres, or a reduction in the number of lots, so that the disturbance is well under five acres. And I don't mean well under, so the limits of disturbance are under five acres, as they're required. Or the third option would be to complete the actual stormwater study, create the stormwater mitigation for the six lots, and show it appropriately on the plan. So that's kind of a three-pronged, I don't know what the applicant would choose, but that's what's, what we're asking for. Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Questions for the board? Ernie, any questions from you for the board?
No.
Okay. So it's a couple of decisions, and probably some research. What, how much time do you need to do that?
Probably, say, the month.
Okay. So we have a meeting on October 4th, and, or October 18th?
Yeah, the 4th.
And you know that, if, you know that you need to have something into us 15 days prior, right? So that's essentially giving yourself about two weeks?
Right.
Because if you need the full month, I would move you to the 18th, and that way you just have to submit to us by October 3rd.
So for the 4th, it's got to be in by one, I'm sorry.
For the 4th, it's got to be in by, would it be September 19th? Am I counting correctly? I'm sorry, Pam, I'm looking at you. I don't have a calendar in front of me, it's hard to count backwards dates.
Thirty days of September. So you can do a celebration.
The 20th of September.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Okay, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay. So the 4th.
And you know you have to have information back into us by the 19th?
Yeah.
So you'll be able to answer both questions and propose something back to the board?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Stuart Scott public hearing to October 4th?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is an initial public hearing for the Castelli Driscoll two-lot subdivision on Old Hopewell Road. We've received a request from the applicant to adjourn this to a date uncertain due to some unexpected changes to their plan. Was there anyone here, here tonight to hear that plan? There was. Okay. What we can do, if you'd like, is we can go ahead and, I can open the public hearing, right, even if we adjourn to a date uncertain, Pam? Just to share what we know with the public? I'm looking at you. Yeah, okay. So why don't we go ahead? We received all the advertising that we needed and everything to be able to open? Bear with us for just one moment, folks.
No, I don't have a, I don't have a court statement.
Okay. So if it's all right with you folks, we'll, we'll depart from procedure just a little bit. We won't open the public hearing, but we will tell you what, what is in front of us, and just let you know that the applicant will actually have to re-advertise and resend all of you letters, letting you know if you're within 500 feet of the property, and letting you know that there's a, a new submission, and that it's being rescheduled for public hearing. It'll give you a specific date and time that we would be opening the public hearing at that point. This was basically a, there's a fairly large parcel of land that the applicant has requested to carve out. I think, was it about a five-acre parcel to one side? If you're on the road looking at the parcel, it was on the right-hand, I can't tell my right from my left anymore, sorry. It's on the right hand, this side, over here, if you're looking, on the right-hand side, and proposing a single-family home for a relative. So the, the plan, the plan was submitted was sufficient for us to schedule the public hearing. In the meantime, the applicant realized they need to make some changes to the plan, and may have a different plan they want to submit, so they've asked us to not open the public hearing, and they will re-advertise when it comes about. Again, I know we're stepping a little bit outside of normal procedure, but do you guys have any questions for us? I apologize for making you wait, I should have, come on up, sure. And if we can just, as you come to the podium, if we can just capture your name for our minutes, that would be helpful.
It's going to be difficult. Dennis Oleschek.
Okay. We may ask you to write your last name for us on the chart over there, if you don't mind.
Write it on the chart, really? Good.
Not right now, you can do it after.
Okay, oh, absolutely.
But yeah, go for it.
I just have one concern about water. Are there going to be wells, are going to be brink-of-half water? Because I live on Marge's Way right over, and there's water shortages every year, there's restrictions all the time, for the last five years.
Right, right. I, and Michelle, I'm looking at you, I'm not sure if the applicant got that far in their proposal to tell us whether or not they were going to try to hook into any existing municipal water, or if they were intending to drill a well.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that.
But would that information be at the next hearing?
It would be. We can make sure that the applicant knows that there's a concern before they resubmit, and make sure they've included their intention.
Absolutely, because I said every year, there's restrictions, I mean, so.
Okay. Okay, so that's good to know.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
My name?
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you.
You want to check my license?
Any, any other, any other questions? And again, I apologize for making you folks wait for me to tell you we weren't opening the public hearing, but are you, any other questions? Okay. All right. You will receive an additional notification to tell you when we've actually scheduled this for public hearing again, so we're not actually opening the public hearing right now. And thank you very much, I apologize for making you wait.
That's okay, no problem, thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Fishkill Plains Holding amended site plan on Route 376. Sam, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public?
Yeah.
Hey, do I have a motion to open the public hearing for Fishkill Plains Holdings?
So moved.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. And Mike, as you're getting set up there, we don't have official comments from the ARB yet, but they did share that they have approved your elevations, and we should have those minutes shortly. So this public hearing includes your elevation drawings, and you have the approval of the ARB for those.
Thank you. Yeah, that was last, last week.
Great.
Do you want me to put the graphic up?
Yeah, if we could put it up on the overhead, that would be great.
Okay. So we're here tonight, actually, this is, as you mentioned, is a public hearing for Fishkill Plains Holdings. This is an extension of an existing office building, my office building located over on 376, across from the new tattoo parlor. Really? Not my thing, but it's okay.
The Italian ice is.
You could theoretically have an Italian ice while you got your tattoo.
Well, I just got to walk a little further down the road.
I think Rita's, yeah, maybe a little bit further down the road.
So, again, the, the extension is about, about 2,000 square feet, which actually comes out directly off the rear of the existing building. As part of, of the proposal, there's no proposal for really large-scale site improvements, the parking meets the requirements. We threw a couple extra spaces back in when we did the original conversion from the home to the building. The, the septic actually was slightly overdesigned at the time, we'll have to get confirmation from the health department and so forth, but we kind of built that into, with the potential that, that this may happen. One of the, the concerns at the last meeting, we have a DEC wetland that resides on the backside of the property. It had lapsed just by actually a few months. Since the time we've been for here, we went ahead, DEC came back out, they re-upped the line, so now we are in conformance. The line did not change. The line runs actually along the backside here. We have a 100-foot buffer, of which we don't propose on doing anything in. Right now, we have a split-rail fence which runs the perimeter. Works okay. Over the years, I've had to replace a couple of posts and so forth, but it's regular maintenance type of stuff.
I'm proposing to maintain the split rail, you're not proposing to switch to anything else?
No, no. I think as part of the original site plan, we never went ahead, it really wasn't required relative to a conservation easement on that parcel, or, you know, that, that is restricted by the 100-foot buff. We plan on doing that now, and I'm sure there's some language that will be built in relative to the maintenance of that 100-foot perimeter fencing, just to make sure it's, it's maintained. Again, I think the wetland was, was the largest issue we had. We are proposing to connect to central water. We have an existing water main that resides in the front of the property. Right now, we're still on a well, we're, we don't use much water. But just makes good sense being that it's there, and we're in the district to connect.
Is that a condition of putting the addition on, or just something you're planning to do regardless?
It's, it's, it's not. It's, we were planning on doing it because it just kind of, we're there.
You're in the district now?
Yeah.
You're paying?
Yeah. So, no, it's not, it's not that we need to tie in in order to make the addition happen. We're on existing point well there. So it's, it works, but it's, it doesn't, with the expansion, it doesn't push us into a public water supply, or it's different criteria where that well would be an issue. It's just, it's pretty shallow and, you know. As mentioned, we were before the ARB, we did two nice meetings with, with the ARB, and then we, we got our approval last Thursday night with them, made a couple of slight modifications, nothing major motion, but just to kind of complement. As you come and you look, when you, when you approach this building, you can't see, you can't see anything from the rear, and you certainly can't see anything from the front, because it's, it's so close to the road. But the elevations you see are from the approach on 376. So there were some slight modifications we made on each side to kind of enhance everything kind of blending together, which made some sense, so.
No, no change to color, or different type of siding, or anything like that? It's all going to remain fairly consistent to what's there right now?
Yeah, the color, the color kind of works, so we're just going to extend that all the way, all the way through.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that was kind of the extent, most of the highlight items, so.
Okay. With the, Michelle, with the addition, did we take a look at the existing parking and handicap spots? Are we still good with-
We did, yes.
Size of parking?
Yeah, I mean, there was a, we did have a discussion about the handicap parking, because it was a little bit, the distance that someone had to walk because of the way the building is situated was a little bit farther than it would be ideal, but we also know that there, it's very rare that they have visitors that have handicap needs, so it's not a normal occurrence that they have someone that needs to utilize it, but it, it does still provide a passageway and a way to get around, it's just that there's a limitation in how they can configure it to work.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? No? Okay. Any, anything else, or any other things we need, Michelle, from your perspective? What about landscaping, lighting, all of that good stuff? Has that all been reviewed?
Yes. So I, I don't believe there's any proposed changes to the lighting at the parking lot at all.
Nope.
And I think you have some lighting on the outdoor, there's one near the, did you show a wall pack near the doorway?
Yeah, well, it's, it's really, it's an office, but it's really a home, so it's, it'd be-
But where you, I thought you said showed, or we're going to show one near where the handicapped access was.
I don't know if you provide enough of the information in terms of the call-out relative to the proposed, there's a proposed entry door, door entry door on the rear. This is looking, coming from Stewart's, right? So, you know, we have currently a light, a dome light underneath the existing over, kind of the, the whole outdoor, open shed area here. The idea would just be to complement that, so it'd be kind of a shining down, but.
I'm just gonna ask you to say that again, but over by one of the mics, so we can pick you up.
So, in each, actually, we have three entry door locations in an existing building, both sides, then in the front, and coming from the original building, there's, there's a, on the porches, there's an over, there's a dome light that sits there, it's a little colonial, and what it does, it just provides a little lighting relative to the entry, so the idea was just to complement that.
Okay.
I don't know if you'd get half a foot candle coming off the porch, it's just.
But certainly, nothing's filling off the property.
No, no. And then, and then, and then again, the lighting, the significant lighting, I mean, there's some accent lighting on the front of the building, which is gonna remain, there's no others proposed, and then the freestanding lighting in the parking lot will, remains unchanged.
And landscaping, Michelle?
I, I didn't request that he make any changes to landscaping that currently exists, but.
Do you have plantings around the building now, Mike, that need to be continued, or?
Yeah, we do, and then we can, what we did is we, as part of the submission, we do have.
I was gonna ask you if you could stand next to the mic, if you don't mind.
As part of the submission, we do have, provided a detail, so all of some notes, and we're gonna complement, right now, there's basically a large river rock that runs along the perimeter, so we're gonna carry that on, and then we do have, you know, a couple of shrub planting schedule on here, which is gonna complement effectively what's there. So Michelle, we'll have to sign off on that at the end of the day.
Basically, but continuing kind of the deal, we'll answer.
Same, same, same deal, yeah.
But I didn't make him, I didn't propose that he add any, any other than what he was showing, basically.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure we've looked at all of those things. Anything from Morris, Joe?
Mike, and this plan took care of the majority of the items in our last memo. As far as the water connection goes, we asked for some more specifics, and the, there is a permit that he would have to take from the building department, a water connection permit to implement the actual physical connection of the line, so, but that, those details, I think he can provide separate to the building department.
Okay.
If that works, yeah. I think at one time I actually pulled the permit, but we didn't move forward on it a couple of years ago, so we can, we can make that happen.
Sorry.
There's an existing valve that sits right out front, we can, we're gonna pull it right off of, the random name, they.
You have a curb stop already?
There's a curb stop sitting there.
Yeah, I don't have any, any other comments.
Okay. Scott or Tom, anything to review? Okay. No other questions from the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to offer comment? Only once?
Can you hear us out there?
Twice. We're getting a wave.
Crowd control, before we open the public hearing, we should get some crowd control.
Okay. I don't think there's any open items. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And Mike, we can put you on for decision next week, I'm sorry, next meeting, which is October 4th.
Is that gonna meet your schedule?
Oh, so you're not me, what are we at? Are we not meeting in, meeting in September?
I'm sorry, what did I say?
October 20.
I said October, I'm sorry, I can't read, September 20th.
That would be fine.
Okay. I'm sorry, folks, so we'll schedule this for decision on September 20th.
I lost a month.
So, that was me.
Who's looking out for it?
You can, Mike, if you wanna go ahead and submit your plans to the building department for review.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Just, when you submit them, you gotta let Paul know.
What's that?
You gotta let Paul know when you submit it, and we spoke about it at the meeting, that we'll review them. Normally, we won't review until you have a sign.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, Scott, I don't, I mean, there's gonna be no significant changes to this one, so.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, dumb question. The ARB elevations are approved. Is there any other approvals coming from the ARB?
No, they have to, they have to approve the elevation drawings, that includes the review of color and materials and anything that's within their purview.
We had met, it was approved, he was gonna say something to you, which he did, I think, and then it follows up with minutes a few weeks later, that's.
The moment of paranoia, when you said ARB elevation approval, I was thinking, is that the same thing as ARB approval?
It is, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Should be everything.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thanks, man. Thank you.
Okay, and it's September 20th.
September 20th, thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a referral from the town board with a rezone request. So Michelle, I, we have, I think, a copy of that in our packages tonight, I think Pam had shared this with us by, by email a few days ago, or last, last couple of weeks. This is basically an existing parcel that is half B1 and half R1, so the rear half of the property is in an R1 zone, and we have an applicant who's running a current business at the site requesting that they'd like their entire site to be B1. And this has come to, it goes to the town board because it's a rezone request, and it's come to the planning board for comment. Michelle, is there, is there anything specific that we need to go over with this particular property, or just in general with these kind of split zones on a single parcel? Because my inclination is to try to fix all of them, because I don't think it's.
Yeah, typically, that's what I was gonna say, typically, it's not, it doesn't usually work well to have a split zone, so it's, it's actually something that a lot of towns will consider, just rezoning all parcels that are split zone at one time, a lot, and so it's very common that you do actually make them conform to one zone or the other. And in this case, the use is already a business use, so it makes sense that it be a business use.
What is the impetus for this?
I don't, he wants, why?
The impetus for this, why, why do you wake up some morning and say, you know what? The fact that that over there is resident, the other half of the room is residential?
Well, I'm specifically looking at the drawing, Mike, and I'm, this is speculation on my part, I don't know this, but the drawing actually shows that he's put employee parking in the R1 and is proposing, or says he has solar panels installed, which he couldn't do in an R1 for a business purpose.
Okay, so it's, it's.
And I don't know that these are actually.
To enable an expansion of some sort.
I was gonna say, it's usually a precursor to another shoe dropping.
And as Michelle indicated, when the town was originally zoned, the town fathers at the time just said if you're on Route 82, the first 300 feet in is commercial. Well, that disregarded because they didn't get into the map, the size of the lots and everything, so we have this throughout the town on most of the major commercial corridors where the zoning was for the first 300 feet in, so from time to time, we get this, and I know Michelle's discussed with the town board about doing a.
More holistic.
A holistic fix of the problem, but this particular property owner doesn't want to await that, they wanna move forward.
So we're not sure what the next, but it's usually a precursor of.
Right, well, they either gonna expand the building and put solar panels, or whatever it might be.
So, so my one comment here is kind of on that same line. I have a concern that we have a drawing here that's representing what's at the site, it doesn't say proposed or, you know, potential, it says what's there, and this is not approved site, this is not an approved site plan, the site plan is different than this. So Michelle, I don't know how we would appropriately address that with the town board, but I think we need to make clear that there's no tacit approval of anything in this drawing, and that we would expect that if there is a change to be made to the site plan, the applicant, if their zoning change is approved, would come to the planning board.
And we may have some comments on some of the stuff that's, if, if it in fact exists the way it's shown on this drawing, you know, there might need to be some small changes to, to the site plan.
I just wanna make clear, though, that this, at least my understanding is that, I don't recall any solar panels being approved for this lot, or an employee parking lot in the back, so I think whether or not this is here right now, it is out of conformance with the existing site plan.
Correct.
And if it was intended to be labeled as proposed or something like that, I get it, but I just didn't want any approval of a zoning change to be a tacit approval of a site plan change. I would agree, at some point, I think, while we may, we've gotten now a couple of sort of individual requests for rezones, ideally, we, we could maybe make some sort of more, I keep using the word holistic, I'm gonna use it again, a more holistic fix for this, which I know is a bigger undertaking, and you wouldn't necessarily want to make one single lot owner have to wait for that, but I, I think we have to provide that as part of the feedback from the planning board, be my recommendation. We've had a couple of issues where we've had these kind of split zones, and it does cause some hardship for the property owner. Other?
So in general, if I write up your comments, I can say in general, you're in favor, I guess you're gonna poll the board, but I would say currently that you're in favor of the rezone, but you would also like to potentially see a more comprehensive look at the split zones in general for a possible fix.
Yeah. Rather than forcing an individual property owner to have to come piece by piece by piece, I think it just makes sense. And does save, you know, questions come before the planning board because of the split zone on some properties, you know, what are the setbacks they have to live by, that sort of thing? It kind of gets rid of any of those questions, because if every parcel is only in one zone, setbacks and things like that are very clear, so bulk requirements, any of that stuff, becomes much clearer when there isn't split zoning. Other comments or suggestions from the planning board? Any opposition to doing this, or any concern?
No.
What would the nature of the rezon, I mean, would you move it to 400 feet, or would it be case by case by case?
I think what I would, what we would typically do is we'd look at all the parcels that are split zone, and you would just say it's gonna be one zone or the other, and it would typically probably be the commercial, because the commercial is what's up front along the road.
So it would wind up being kind of like a jagged line?
Right, it would go like this.
It would, but it would be, it would match the parcels, the lots.
Right, but still, jagged versus 400 to 500, I mean.
Because you wouldn't eliminate it. 400, 500, you wouldn't eliminate the issue.
Well, if you went to 400 or 500, then you're gonna have, you're gonna have parcels that are currently actually frontage on a different road, maybe being included in a business zone where they're part of a neighborhood, and there's.
I understand, I'm just, legitimate question, legitimate question?
Well, usually the way you word it now, is you said a lot as it exists in the date of adoption.
You appreciate that, yeah, you are there for me.
A lot as it exists in the date of adoption with frontage on, just as an example, Route 82, the entire holding then would be the business zone, B1.
And it, there's, we know that, we know of the areas in town that typically have these split zones, so we're well aware to pull the maps out, because sometimes we have, you know, sometimes it looks like they're one or the other, and we realize that on the whole map, it's actually split in a weird way.
It affects taxes, though, doesn't it?
Not majorly, no. Because the tax is gonna be for what's on the property, so if the commercial building's on the front, then the value is more. And right now, in East Fishkill, we don't have homestead, non-homestead, so everybody's attacked, everyone's tax is based on the fair market value of the building. There's no differentiation. Other towns have homestead, non-homestead, where you have two different rates.
Thank you.
Okay, any other feedback from Michelle? Michelle, is that something you'd wanna draft and just circulate back to the board then? I don't know what the timing is for this, or when the town board has this scheduled, but.
Try to do it this week and get it sent around.
That would be, that would be great, and we can either put it as a discussion on our next meeting, or if we need to have a response back to the town board sooner, we would just ask members of the planning board to respond via email if need be. Okay, great. Any other items for tonight?
Just one more item from the floor, please. The highway superintendent received a complaint about a dead tree on Old Fishkill Hook Road that happens to be in the work area of Saxon Woods within that area.
Okay.
And previously, the board had stated that the tree must remain to be protected and remain, but, but since that time, I think a dead branch, I guess, fell into the road, and that's what resulted in the complaint. The highway super took a look, says the tree should come down, if it was any other road, he would take it down himself. The developer has agreed to take it down, but only with the consent of the planning board.
Okay, and this, it's not done immediately because it was a tree marked on the plan as?
As to protect.
I'm sure it had a certain diameter, right, so it was probably within the diameter of the tree survey?
Right.
It was a walnut tree or something, something?
It's an American walnut.
Right? Yeah, that's what I thought, I thought.
I'm having a senior moment.
But it has no, no value any longer if it's dead, and it's probably, I think what the highway superintendent is saying, it's maybe a safety concern.
Just recently approved it, two years ago.
Right, but I know, but it's.
It's another wetland situat, you know, extensive wetlands around the area.
Okay. Oh, 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 yes, yes, okay, got it, yes.
So, so Scott, in general, we can certainly take an action for this particular tree to be removed, but in general, I guess I would be concerned if there's a public safety hazard that we not, that we use discretion and not necessarily wait for the planning board to agree with that. So I don't know if there was an imminent danger, it sounds like maybe the branch already fell, but.
Well, I think the developer was concerned that they, they would be considered violating their approvals, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate.
Right, the only thing might be, I don't know, in the future, I mean, we have a new highway superintendent, so in the future, do we leave a little latitude that if it's within striking distance of the road, that the highway superintendent can?
With the pleasure of the board, I would, I would be comfortable saying that if any board member agrees, doesn't agree.
I think what's unique about this is that the developer just started construction of the infrastructure and the concern, but rest assured, if there's any tree that's in danger of falling on public right-of-way, whether it's within our right-of-way or off our right-of-way, based on the current state of New York's law, we're gonna take it down.
Okay.
Because it's too costly to, we don't want anyone to get hurt, and it's too costly